Good evening. Welcome, thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for January 4th, 2024. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is the stands nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Miskman.
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley.
Here.
Ms. Menser.
Here.
Mr. Ferrant.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Here.
Thank you, at this time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, this evening we have our ceremonial oaths of office for five city council members. And I want to welcome everyone who's here this evening for this event. We have our former mayors, Ren and Boffenstein, all the family and friends, the city team, our community partners, and our friends from around the region. So thank you all, it means a lot that you're here for this, so you're welcome. Okay, since taking office eight years ago, I've worked to elevate these events to make them special for the council members and for the community and leaned on some of my judges, judge friends to administer the ceremonial oaths. And my good friend, District, US District Court Judge Mark Roberts has been kind enough to return to help us out this evening. And Mark and I were law partners for many years before he, obviously he's smarter than me, he went on to be a US District Court Judge. He's still today one of the nicest and smartest people I've ever met. So thank you for coming, Judge Roberts. And I guess I'm going first, right? So, okay. Would you like to say?
However you'd like to do it, you're the boss, I guess. I will say that I have known Nick for more than thirty years. I appreciate his attempt to elevate me to a district court judge position. I'm a United States magistrate judge and I don't want the record to reflect that I'm assuming errors or something. This says, Nick, that I'm supposed to read and then the council member repeats. It doesn't say anywhere in here that I can't add things. So, Christiane, if you'd like me to add anything here about a Broadway play or a new convertible, let me know, I can see if I can work that in. Okay, there's not a motion, so. Mayor, if you'd please raise your right hand. Repeat after me, I Nicholas, Nicholas Abou Osley.
I Nicholas Abou Osley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties.
Discharge all of the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
The office of mayor.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. And that indicates the next victim is Steve Jensen. Whoever wrote these out broke it down well. Me a lot to repeat if I did any more.
Short, we need short sentences.
Very good. Please raise your right hand. I Steve Jensen.
I Steve Jensen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the ordinance of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinance of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
The office of council member.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Mr. Miskman, if I could ask you to please raise your right hand. I Gage Miskman. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of Iowa. And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa. And that I will faithfully and impartially. To the best of my ability. Discharge all the duties. Of the office of council member. In the city of Marion, Iowa. As now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations. Mr. Harper, if I could ask you to raise your right hand, please. I Grant Harper.
I Grant Harper.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. And finally, Mr. Brandt. I wish I did, my arm's getting sore, though. I Will Brandt.
I Will Brandt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa. And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa. And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
The office of council member.
In the city of Marion, Iowa. As now or hereafter required by law. Congratulations.
Thank you to Judge Roberts. And thanks again to everyone for joining us today. Your presence and support are important. Now, taking on this role is not easy when we make that decision. We do it in reliance on the support of and partnership we receive from all of you, our friends, family, and community partners. Many of you have heard me say that no one can succeed unless the people around them are invested in their success, and I truly believe that. So thank you all for investing in the success of this council as we all work together for one goal, which is the progress of Marion and making it one of America's best small cities and a place where people and businesses have the opportunities they desire. For me, this evening marks the beginning of a third term in office with a diff, with what a difference eight years makes. If you were involved eight years ago, I think you'd agree there was frankly a much different atmosphere in this building and in our city as a whole. I promised to work hard, listen to all voices, bring people together and build consensus, and invite to the table all who have Marion's best interests at heart and are willing to work sincerely to shape a vibrant and growing community full of opportunity. I challenged us to put our reaching higher motto into action and to stop settling for good enough. I pushed us to get in the driver's seat and be firmly in charge of driving our own destiny. I asked each of us to give our best, expect the best, and ask for the best. I encouraged us to break down the walls and silos that were hindering us, move past the divisions, see the best in each other, and work together toward a common vision as one Team Marion. Since then, I've happily invested thousands of hours, meeting, listening, collaborating, sharing ideas, promoting a positive and ambitious vision, recruiting businesses and investors, raising money, and doing whatever is necessary to ensure our success. In that time, we've strengthened our team, expanded partnerships across the region, and cemented our progress and collaboration. We've set a high standard of excellence and earned the buy-in of residents, business owners, and investors who are now actively involved in making the vision a reality. We've become decidedly customer service oriented, prioritize quality of life, and sharpened our focus on giving residents amazing opportunities. The past eight years, we've grown up as a city, putting behind us contentious divisive, self-interested politics and uniting all corners of our town and shaping an inclusive progressive community where all people belong, are valued, and have the opportunities to add value. We're more responsive to residents' needs, focused on giving them the best services and helping them solve their issues. We work hard to be accessible, communicative, and completely transparent in all we do. We use every opportunity to engage with residents and inform them of what we're doing and the reasons for our decisions. We've become more professional, more methodical, and more process oriented. Our decision-making has become future-focused, fact-based, expert-informed, and well-founded. We've set the highest expectations for ourselves, recruited the best leaders, and assembled an awesome team of qualified professionals who are establishing a solid roadmap for sustained growth and prosperity long after any of us are involved. The list of amenities we've added in eight years is nothing short of amazing for a small city. The Uptown Artway, the skate park, the inclusive playground, the YMCA, and Community Rec Center, the library, the airport are just a few examples. We've added two new parks, improved others, and built much of our current thirty-five miles of trails. We've built out Tower Terrace Road, invested twenty million dollars in the central corridor infrastructure, built Sixth Avenue, and the new Uptown Streetscape and North Plaza. We've completely reinvented and revamped our city core from a quiet, nondescript place to a vibrant city center and destination for the region. We've seen commercial and residential development soar with single-family neighborhoods and a diversity of new options with projects such as Broad and Main, Boulevard Apartments, Green Park Apartments, East Town Apartments, Terrace Glen, The Views, and Marion Lofts. We grew our industrial tax base and incented the development of commercial areas such as East Town Crossing and the East End Roundabout area, and we balked on many new businesses who are eager to contribute to Marion's momentum. Our city's total valuation increased by nearly two billion dollars in that eight years. In this eight years, we steered our city successfully through a historic pandemic and a historic natural disaster, putting the unity in community and showing the world exactly how it should be done. We did all of this by setting aside differences, giving each other the benefit of the doubt, and collaborating as one Team Marion toward a vision of excellence. Today, Marion is Iowa's thirteenth largest city and one of the fastest-growing, having added more than twenty-three hundred new households in the last two years alone. Our city is highly recognized across the state and nation as a place that's got it going on. It's definitely on the map and an indisputable part of the regional equation. With excellent services, endless opportunities, and more than eighty community events annually, Marion's residents today love their Marion address. More than ever before, children who grow up here are proud of their town and talking about staying or returning here to live and raise families. We've engaged people of all ages and backgrounds in moving the community forward and earned their trust and respect. Truly, what a difference eight years makes. I'm encouraged by where we are, inspired by the prevailing can-do attitude, and enthusiastic about our future. Imagine what we can do in the next eight years. It's really up to us. We have the right team in place, we've laid the foundation and set a solid course. There will be challenges and obstacles, for sure, that's just how it goes, but no challenge is too great if we maintain our focus on a common vision and work together to achieve it. Let's continue reaching even higher. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will proceed with the agenda for the meeting. Visitors are welcome to stay, obviously, or if you wanted to leave, you're free to do so at this time. Thank you, thank you all for being here. Our first item on the agenda are two proclamations, one for Martin Luther King Junior Day and one for Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. I will come down front and issue the Martin Luther King Junior Day proclamation and Gage Miskman will do the other one. Okay, we have Anthony with the African American Museum here to accept the proclamation.
Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. Whereas Dr. King's example and teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities, and whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in nineteen ninety-four designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service, and this year marks the thirtieth anniversary. And whereas since nineteen ninety-four, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our residents together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to serve throughout the year. And whereas the city of Marion is committed to equality, social justice, and greater opportunity for all people, and whereas residents of Marion, Iowa have the opportunity to honor Dr. Martin Luther King, his legacy on the King Day of Service, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, by participating in service projects throughout our community. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of the city of Marion, Iowa, to hereby proclaim Martin Luther King Junior Day as a day of service in Marion, and call upon the residents of the community to pay tribute to the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Junior Day and throughout the year.
Wasn't really prepared to say anything, but hey, this is definitely a special day. I'm originally from Waco, Texas, now a resident here in Iowa. Growing up, my dad actually had me say the "I have a dream" speech. So actually be able to get this proclamation is definitely special to myself, but it's also special to the African American Museum, which is one of a kind here in Iowa. So on behalf of African American Museum, I would like to say thank you to everybody here and also yourself, Mayor Abou Osley, on this proclamation. And that's all I got for today. Thank you.
Whereas human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, or coercion to compel a person into commercial sex acts or labor services against their will, exploitation of a minor for commercial sex is human trafficking, regardless of whether any form of force, fraud, or coercion was used. And whereas one of the world's fastest-growing crimes is the buying and selling of people whose growth has been accelerated in recent years due to an increase in other social injustices, such as abuse, domestic violence, racism, stigmatism, and more. Communities in rural Iowa are seeing a significant increase in the number of children victimized by labor trafficking, especially children coming to the United States from Central America. And whereas there is a large disparity between the number of persons victimized by this horrific crime and the number of persons prosecuted as offenders, with more than six hundred and sixty-one victims receiving services in Iowa's direct service programs in twenty twenty-two, and only three individuals being convicted in Iowa's federal courts for human trafficking and four in Iowa's state appellate courts. And whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to be missed and go vastly unreported. Whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking, choosing products that are not made by forced labor, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And whereas the city of Marion joins Chains Interrupted and their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, collaboration with law enforcement. Now therefore, I, Gage Miskman, on behalf of Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of January as Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, encourage all of our residents to become more informed on this growing problem to be vigilant and report suspicious activity and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all of, in all its forms in our community. For assistance with this, reach out to Chains Interrupted at three one nine three six four zero two two two. If you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to the National Human Trafficking Hotline at eight 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 three seven three seven eight eight eight.
Good evening, thank you so much. I really appreciate the mayor and the city council to sign, read and sign this proclamation declaring January Anti-Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. Chains Interrupted is dedicated to the prevention of this crime in our youth and also assisting any type of minor that would be involved in the life of human trafficking out of the life as well as to true restoration from this trauma that inflicts itself upon their, their life. And so Chains Interrupted can't do this alone, it's going to take an entire community. Many of our systems are simply not prepared to deal with this. So if anyone would like to join us in the fight, please call our number, visit our website at chainsinterrupted.com or info@chainsinterrupted.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public forum, which at the time set aside for comments from members of the public on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Is there anyone here to address council? Please come forward. Is this an item on the agenda tonight?
Is this public forum? I did put it on the yellow sheet.
Okay, so this, there are two public forums, this one, I just want to be sure you're speaking at the right one. There's, this first public forum is for items that are on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing. And then at the, towards the end of the meeting, we'll have another public forum for any other topic.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your patience. Anyone here to address council on any topic that is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing? Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we'll close that part of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda. This will include items A1 through E3 and resolution numbers three one seven four six through three one seven four eight.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through E3, resolutions three one seven four six through three one seven four eight. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. For the next section, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem. Our new mayor pro tem, Councilmember Menser.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with the mayor's abstention as follows. Items F1, resolution three one seven four nine.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one seven four nine. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Back to you, Mayor.
Next item is a public hearing regarding an easement for electric utility with Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association regarding Tower Terrace Road project from C Avenue to Albernett Road. The public hearing is now open, do we have a presentation?
Yes, Your Honor, just a very quick one. So this is basically on the south side of the portion of Tower Terrace that we're building. And so this is just to allow them to come in, just like if it was a normally plotted property, they would, they're going south of our right-of-way and property that we, remnant pieces that we bought, and we had to buy the right-of-way. And so we're just letting them have that easement so that they can provide the facilities so that we can have power in that section.
So we are in favor. You'll be available for questions when we have the motion. At this time, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure? Please come forward. Have we received comments outside the meeting?
I have not.
Mike? Okay, please note that for the record, we'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three one seven five zero, approving an easement for electric utility with Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association regarding the Tower Terrace Road project from C Avenue to Albernett Road.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one seven five zero, approving an easement for electric utility with Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative Association regarding Tower Terrace Road project from C Avenue to Albernett Road. Discussion, questions for the city engineer?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mike, maybe just a comment, but confirm if I'm right on this. Doing this at this point in time is timely and appropriate in order to establish that right-of-way so that electric utilities and like can go in unison with other construction.
Correct, so we will, so the grading utility package is done, we're going to pave it next year. So they want to go ahead and get the utilities in now before we pave the road.
Okay, and this is all going to end up being underground?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion or questions? All right, we'll vote, all those in favor of approving resolution number three one seven five zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public comment regarding, public comment section regarding a request for the addition of a four-way stop at the intersection of C Avenue and South Fourteenth Street. Looks like our city engineer has a presentation.
Yeah, so as you may recall from our last council meeting, similar situation where it's an existing two-way stop conversion to a requested four-way stop condition. High level, we're recommending leave as-is with no modifications. So, well, again, I'll walk through the warrants. So the first one is, again, a traffic signal met warrants, and it took six months to get all the materials, then you could put temporary stop signs up. In this case, it does not meet signal warrants, so A does not apply. For B, five or more reported crashes in a twelve-month period at this intersection since twenty thirteen, which is how far back ICAT, the Iowa Crash Analysis Tool, goes, there have been zero accidents at this intersection. So that does not meet. The next one is the combination. The next one is the combination where it looks at the major street and minor street, and it has to meet both of those criteria, one and two, for eight hours. It does not meet the 300 or 200 vehicles per hour for any of the hours. In the TAC report, the highest we had was 73 on the major and 38 on the minor. So fairly low traffic intersection. The 85th percentile on that were all lower. Those are in the report as well, being at 25 mile an hour in both directions. We're not exceeding the 40 miles an hour. And even with reducing it to 70%, that takes the warrants down to 210 on the major and 140 on the minor, still does not meet even that for an hour. And then, so if the last one, if it does not meet any requirements, even lowering it to 70 versus 80, it still doesn't meet the requirements. We also did do pedestrian counts as well as vehicular counts. There was a period between 3:15 and 3:30 in the afternoon where there were 24 pedestrians that were going north-south. Speaking with the superintendent, those mostly are for the Boys and Girls Club, and they do have a chauffeur. There's not a crossing guard at that intersection. They basically have a teacher that goes with them when they have that big group of people. But we do have the pedestrian counts in there. In the morning, there was eight total. And then in the afternoon, there was the time period where there was 24 north-south and five east-west. Otherwise, it was very sporadic. One thing that I added that was not in the report last time was intersection safety myth versus reality, just because there's a lot of perceptions out there that if you put more stop signs in, it automatically makes it more safe. That's not the case. It can actually cause a child or anyone to, if you put that stop sign in, then you think that that car is going to stop, and it may not. So it gives you that salt, that perception of security when it's not really there, if they're going to break the law. And then we never put them in for reduction of speed, because a lot of times, if you put stop signs in, they erased the next stop sign. So they stop, accelerate, stop, accelerate. And so that's not a reason to put stop signs in. I know this is, you know, an area with children. But if they're darting in the street, it doesn't matter if the stop sign's there, unfortunately. So high level, that's the TAC report. I'll let it go to the public comment period, and then I can answer questions.
Thank you. Okay, the comment period is open. If there's anyone here to address counsel on this measure, please come forward. Okay, we'll ask the city clerk if we received comments besides the initial request.
The petitioner did write in after the agenda was posted, just to restate that he's in support of having the four-way stop.
Mike, any others? Okay. All right, we'll close the comment section and move on to the motion.
Mayor, I move to receive and file a Traffic Advisory Committee TAC report regarding a request for a four-way stop at the intersection of C Avenue and South 14th Street.
Second. I moved and seconded to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report regarding the request for a four-way stop sign at the intersection of C Avenue and South 14th Street. Discussion? Questions for the engineer? Go ahead, Steve.
Just a couple of comments. I mean, I'm, I used to live on that side of town. In fact, I attended Starry Elementary School when I was in sixth grade in 1966. So that school and that intersection have been there for a heck of a long time. I guess the other comment I would make is, I mean, Starry is going to be closed after the end of May and will no longer be an elementary school, changing the amount of traffic of children around that area. And at this time, I'm not aware of what the alternative use for that building is. But years ago, I might have given stronger consideration to agreeing to a four-way stop there. But given the future of that intersection and the school, I guess I would support, completely support the TAC recommendation.
Other discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I 100% agree with Steve there. But the only question I had, and I think it was in the report, but just for the public record, there hasn't been like any pedestrian-related incidents on the intersection either, right? We talked about car accidents, but is that considered?
So ICAT has everything. So there's been no police report at that intersection.
Just wanted to make, put that out there for the public, too.
Your Honor. Mike, just a comment about the TAC report and your explanation relative to the warrants. Prior to reading the report, just because I knew this item was on the agenda, I did go look at that intersection. And then subsequently took a look at the data sets that you presented in the, in the report and how the warrants are determined. So I, I just, really, this is a long way of saying, I appreciate the fact, understanding your decision, your decision basis and the criteria by which you make this. So I'm generally of the opinion, just based on what I observed at that intersection plus the report, I'm of the mind to concur with it as well. So thanks.
Other discussion on the motion to receive and file? Go ahead.
Thanks, Mike. And I do appreciate the slide before that lays out the criteria and what you all look at. We've done that a couple of times now, and it's very informative. And I know I had commented to you when we were looking at some of the information. We studied this area, both 14th and 15th, 14th and 15th, as part of the Marion Safe Route School Plan, because there was a lot of discussion on 14th about how we could do better pickup on that side of the building. And there's some details on some changes. And so when I saw this, I was immediately looking at that. But Steve reminded, and I think this is the good point, with the change in the school and what's happening with that building, I would concur with what they're recommending at this point. I guess if that building stays with the Boys and Girls Club and there's future, I'm sure that there is a time for us to reflect back on this or take a look at it if there are major changes to that area that we need to address, that that automatically would come up to us, correct?
Yeah, and I would assume at some point, we're going to update the Marion Independent School District because so much has changed.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you.
Other discussion? Okay, we're voting on the motion to receive and file the report. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to concur with the Traffic Advisory Committee recommendations for the intersection of C Avenue and South 14th Street.
Second.
I moved and seconded to concur with the Traffic Advisory Committee recommendations for the intersection of C Avenue and South 14th Street. I know we already had much of the discussion. Is there anything else that anyone wanted to add? And Mike, is the reasoning, then we'll make an effort to share the reasoning with the petitioners?
Well, they've already received everything. I mean, I can call Mr. Huntune, but they've received everything the city council has.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to concur with the Traffic Advisory Committee recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve order number 24-01, amending sections 263-12 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding location restrictions of sexually oriented businesses. This will be the second consideration.
Second. I moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of ordinance number 21-04, amending sections 263 point dash 12 of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding location restrictions of sexually oriented businesses. Discussion?
Your Honor, a comment?
Yes.
So Dave, just again, for the record, at our last meeting, I stated my understanding is that this is just to make sure that internal to our ordinances, all elements are consistent on this. And so I just want to, again, confirm that's what we're doing with this, with this change.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the second consideration of ordinance number 24-01, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a discussion and direction regarding the department's, the department monthly reports. Rachel?
A department monthly report is currently submitted each month to city council. Recently, staff reviewed the report to see if there could be gained efficiencies or information could be streamlined. A proposed monthly report was provided in your packet. Information removed. What is reported in another manner, such as the in-focus, projects in motion, quarterly update, engineering newsletter, other information is or will be provided on our website. So it was replaced with a short summary and a link to that full report. Staff is seeking council's feedback on if we should move forward with the proposed layout. And then just keep in mind that we're, the team is working to achieve GFOA certifications for our budget. So this monthly report may change within the next year or two as well.
Okay, and what are you looking for?
Just your thoughts on the proposed layout, if you're, if you'd like to move forward with that, or if there's anything not included that you would like included?
Anyone with, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, this is a step to making this monthly report more of a dashboard and, you know, linking us to appropriate information that's held elsewhere on our website. Makes a lot of sense. It eliminates perhaps some clerical errors and transposing information and the like, and so that there's a consistency of information. So on those bases, I, I like this round of revisions and certainly would endorse looking for other opportunities to streamline it.
Yeah, I kind of played around with that this weekend. So I clicked on the police department and the fire department, trying to figure out where these reports would be. So I assume the logical place they might be in the future would be under documents and reports.
Correct.
Correct?
It was, a lot of the information in the proposed report was just a placeholder.
Sure.
So it would, the link would be to the direct page that the data.
So, so that's fine. I mean, from the same comments that Grant made, I think that provides efficiency. I think if we come up with some more robust reports, for example, not to pick on, on the fire department, but when I looked at, under their documents and reports, it showed the 2009 to 2015 annual reports, that's all I saw under there. So I think if we're going to go that way and start directing people to those departments, that section needs to get up to date, needs to be modified somewhat. The other benefit I see is actually having people go to the, to the fire department or the police department may actually lead them to see a section within those departments that may interest them or give them, get them more familiar with where, where those sources are or things that they may need in the future. So I like that part of it. But getting the reports there, I'm assuming we'll take care of that in the appropriate manner.
Yep. Some of the, the links, the reports are not currently online, so that would be a step we would take.
Right.
Before we launch this version.
Yep.
Is there anyone with contrary thoughts or who's opposed to the suggested format?
No. Where it's a joke question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, what, so when would be the intended go-live date for this?
The intent was to start in February, so that would be on January's activities.
Okay.
Okay, you have what you need? Thank you. Our next item is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. If you want them to come forward now at this time?
Hi, my name is Bailey. To start, congratulations on your swearing in, and thank you for your service.
Sorry, would you please state your full name and address?
Bailey Simmons, 4350 Calder Drive, here in Marion. I'll share a little bit about myself. I'm Christian, a humanitarian and co-founder of a volunteer organization here in Lynn County. I have been a Marion resident for 20 years. I've purchased property in Marion twice. And most importantly, I'm currently raising three children here in Marion. Until recently, I've always been extremely proud to be a Marion resident. Over the past two to three years, I've become appalled as I've learned about some of the outrageous behavior by the Marion Police Department employees. They have become more and more aggressive. They have a tendency to escalate violent behavior rather than de-escalate it, and there is a serious lack of respect towards select citizens. It is shameful. I would be happy to sit down with you all and provide specifics. Not all scenarios are negative, but the negatives are rapidly beginning to outweigh the positives. Have you walked into the police station lately? If you haven't, I would recommend it. Imagine you're walking in there seeking assistance. Consider how you would feel if you were walking in there on the worst day of your life. Would you feel welcome and safe? I'll describe it to you. You walk into a brightly lit room with dark walls, and you're surrounded by closed doors. Walking into a police station is usually intimidating anyway, but Marion, Iowa takes it to another level. You're not greeted with a smile or a wave. In fact, you cannot see anyone but yourself. The welcome window, ironically labeled communications, is a mirror. You press a button, you hear a faint hello, and then you can provide your request. You cannot see who you're speaking to, and the mirror effect makes you feel like you're talking to yourself. The other issues I have with the Marion Police Department are much more significant than their window treatments. However, the reason I bring this up is because I feel the mirrored window tint is symbolic of the current community relationship between the Marion Police Department and its citizens. Collectively, we feel like we're talking to ourselves anytime we ask for help. I'm happy to provide you with multiple examples involving various different parties to whoever will give me the time and is motivated to create positive change. Many who have been negatively affected are people who were born here, grew up here, work here, and are attempting to raise families here. I don't know anyone who looks forward to going to the police station. At the very least, don't we deserve to be greeted by a face displaying compassion? I do know how difficult it is to work with the public. If we can afford this brand-new police station in fancy window tint, we can and should prioritize customer service and de-escalation training for the communications team and officers in Marion. There are better ways to handle an agitated human being other than shutting blinds down on them, raising your voice, or putting your hands on them. If you choose to work for a police department, you should expect to interact with people who are upset on a regular basis. When you know you're in the business of dealing with escalated individuals, it's your responsibility to learn how to react to them. It's cowardly and disrespectful to attempt to provoke them or refuse to look at them. Our lead county attorney, the self-proclaimed most influential individual in our local judicial system, states he wants to strengthen the relationship between citizens and police officers. I've heard other leaders agree with him. However, actions speak louder than words. Do our authoritative figures really want to have a relationship with, have a healthy relationship with us, or do they just say that? Justice.gov states that transparency and accountability are essential in order to build a healthy relationship between authoritative figures and citizens. I ask that if the leaders in our community truly desire a healthy relationship, that they start by removing the mirrored window tint and allow us to express our frustrations and begin working with us toward solutions. The actions made by the Marion Police Department continue to feel more and more like aggression and intimidation. All you need to do is walk into the police station. You'll feel it before you even press the button and speak to the mirror. I'm happy to provide you with examples of authority figures who I feel are providing great customer service to our community and can provide positive leadership. Community policing efforts is what we are requesting from the city of Marion. We don't care how many arrests you make. We care about how many lives you positively impact. We're trying to raise our children here. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everybody. My name is Dustin from Walford, Iowa. I have some paperwork here for you guys. That paperwork I just handed you guys is a court case right now in Lynn County Court. The case number is CBCV103109. So this is just another real-life example, guys, of the corruption of Marion, Iowa Police Department in the Lynn County Attorney's Office. They operate as a team to destroy people's lives. If you look in there, you can see malicious prosecution, intimidation, harassment, same stuff as the Bonnie Waller lawsuit, same stuff as the Afro Man's lawsuit. You know, these lawsuits keep piling up, guys, and you can't just ignore this forever. The Marion Police Department, it's not necessarily, it's not really the street cops, guys. It's the administration and the command staff. There is a, there is a cancer that has been in the Marion, Iowa Police Department for a long time right now. And the problem with the cancer is, you can't just cut a little bit of it out because it will continue to grow back. You have to gut the whole entire cancer. And the cancer is the administration and the command staff. It's not just the cops you see out on the street. An example of this is, I caught an officer driving with no front plate on his car. That's not the actual officer's fault. It is Chief Kits Miller's fault and the police department's fault for supplying that car. That's not the actual officer's fault. It is Chief Kits Miller's fault and the police department's fault for supplying that car for that individual. And when I filed a complaint about it, I heard nothing back. I came back there to see what's going on, nothing back. It's like they don't care. They just purposely violate the law all day, every day. And I'm using license plates as a petty thing because it's simple and it's easy, but the crimes that these administration staff and the command staff commit, they're very complicated, and I can't get into what they do right now. Um, you guys mentioned that you're going to swear, you guys all actually swore an oath to United States Constitution. I could write book after book about how the Marion Police Department has zero respect for any of those amendments. I could literally go on forever. Um, I went to Marion Iowa Police Department, and Phil Fort refused to ID to me over and over again, even though there is a clear policy that states police officers need to ID to members of the public. When you add that with the tinted glass, that's just straight disrespectful. The lawsuit I gave you also talks about Nicholas Maybanks. You know, same thing as Bonnie Waller lawsuit. What happens is, the Police Department of Marion says, my feelings are hurt, you're going to jail, I'll let the courts deal with it. I have a body cam of a Marion police officer saying almost those exact words. I don't remember exactly, but basically, the cop on the body cam said, I'll just arrest you, have you taken to jail, and let the courts deal with it. But when you get to the courts, you've got criminals like Nicholas Maybanks and Monica Slaughter, and they just make you guilty. They, they will go hands-on with you, they will yell, they will scream, they will, you know, do anything they can to intimidate you. Intimidation, then, you know, the, these cops, they cry that, oh, you got a camera. They signed up to work in a public building. That's literally what they signed up for. If you guys want to know what intimidation is, having somebody outside your private house filming in your windows where you sleep at night, that's intimidation. But these cops, th- they should expect to be filmed. They, they signed up to work for the public. And if you guys could just take some time, go over these lawsuits, go over the videos, go over real-life facts, and, you know, just please see the cancer that is at the top. The, the corruption in the Marion Police Department comes to the top, guys, and it's been going on for a long time. Thank you for your time today.
Anyone else?
Hi there, Chris Sherman with the Marion Sun, twenty-five twenty-five Winchester Drive. So I've started this newsletter or newspaper, I guess, back in October, and I just wanted to thank the community for the support that, uh, all of you have, uh, provided, both, uh, as a community in general and, uh, individually for, from the mayor and from, uh, several people here in the City Council and, and the city offices. But I'm, I'm here actually to give you kind of an update, a ninety-day update. So, uh, for those of you that don't know, we started back in October. Um, it's at MarionSun.com. The, uh, the newspaper has reached a total of, uh, ten thousand website visits in, uh, December. And, uh, those are about sixty-six hundred of those were unique visitors, uh, for that particular month. So that's, uh, over the course of the last ninety days, we had twenty, twenty-seven thousand visits to the website and, uh, fifty thousand page views. Uh, we also had, uh, eight, we have eight hundred and twenty-eight, uh, people subscribed to the newsletter, to the weekly newsletter, four hundred and forty-one subscribed to the daily. Uh, we also have an events weekly and a classifieds weekly, uh, that have about four hundred and two hundred, uh, subscribers as well. So we want to continue to provide the service to the community, and I just wanted to provide everybody kind of an update on what we're doing. The only other comment I had, I guess, is that we've had, uh, three hundred and six articles, uh, over the past ninety days. Uh, so that's about three, three-point-four articles a day, uh, covering everything from what's going on here in City Council, uh, business community, uh, and, uh, uh, to, to the schools and to, to kind of other, other things as well. So just a quick summary, and I appreciate the time and, uh, the continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address counsel? Please state your name and address.
Billy B. So I would like to give a quick background.
Sorry, what's your address, sir? What's your address?
Excuse me?
Your address, sir.
Uh, that's fine. I'm not going to tell you my address. So I want to start off with telling you a bit of who I am and what I've done. I served our country in the Army, airborne infantry, on the front lines, multiple combat deployments. I had my friend and others die literally in my arms. So I take this oath that you just swore to the Constitution very, very seriously. And I'm guessing you probably don't know anything about that oath that you swore today. I'm sure you don't, and that's a shame, because here in Marion, Iowa, corruption runs deep. And it starts with this guy right here, Mike the cuck Kits Miller. He is very corrupt. He's, he's stated many times, he doesn't care about that oath, he doesn't even remember it. We have him on camera saying this. He doesn't care about that oath. He will arrest you whether it's wrong or right and have the courts deal with it. That's what he said verbatim. I have him on camera. I just released a video of him, and of all the corruption in Marion, Iowa, over a hundred thousand people have watched it, and I'm going to continue to expose you guys until you take this oath to the Constitution seriously. Because my friends' deaths, they, they mean a lot to me. That oath means a lot to me. And to have people like him, Mike Kits Miller, that doesn't care about that oath. He doesn't care about our rights. He's here to strip our rights. He doesn't care. Have you checked out how corrupt Lynn County is in general? No one cares about our freedoms here, and the people that don't care about the freedoms, they're the enemy. They're ruining America, land of the free. It's no longer land of the free, because no one here even cares about their oath. I don't know, maybe a couple of you might. But from what I've seen, no one here cares about the oath to the Constitution, our freedoms. I saw, I, I took that same oath. I take it seriously, and it's not being taken seriously, especially in Marion, Iowa. Pigpen, the police department, so corrupt. Watch the video, flex your freedoms. Over a hundred thousand views, and I'll keep throwing them out there. We get a hundred thousand views, no problem. And it exposes the corruption in Marion. Check it out, flex your freedoms, because you will see true corruption. And if you want the problem fixed, honor that oath and kick him out, because he is a traitor. He, he is, he's the enemy here. Look at him squirming, knows it's true. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to just have this keep happening every time. And I know you swore that oath, and I'm guessing.
I'm, I'm going to ask you not to disparage people in this room.
Uh, it's freedom of speech. Learn it. Obviously, you swore that oath just what, minutes ago, and you don't know jack about that oath. You're the problem, too. Wake up, city council members, wake up. He's not good. He's not goo- he's, he's evil. This guy's evil. This guy's shaking his head. No, you guys are corrupt. What's the Fourth Amendment? Do any of you even know? Yeah, that's what I thought, of course. It would have been, if one of you just said it, you know? But I know, does anybody know the freedoms that we have here? It's a shame. It's a joke. It is disgusting. Do better, do better. Learn your oath. You just swore it. Learn what you swore.
Can I ask you to wrap up now, please?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end with this.
Thank you.
You guys are all stupid nerds. Learn our, learn the Constitution, and I see you over there.
Thank you.
I see you, Sarah, Sarah Minzer. I know you're involved with corruption as well. Don't, don't, don't do the eye tilt at me. You, I know, I have things on you.
Sir, sir, I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
I have things on all you guys. Just wait, you guys are going to continue to be exposed. Honor your oath, because I take that seriously. So do my dead friends. Shame on you, especially you, Mike. Shame on you. That's a cow sitting right there.
Move on to council comments. Steve?
Your Honor, I look forward to a productive, uh, year and, uh, appreciate, uh, the opportunity to be of service to the city of Marion.
Happy New Year to everybody. Thanks for all that you've done to get us to twenty-twenty-four. Um, it was a great twenty-twenty-three, and we look forward to all that we will do, um, in twenty-twenty-four as, as Team Marion, and we appreciate the work that everybody's been doing, so thank you.
Ben?
Uh, thank you. I just want to say congratulations to everyone that was re-elected, uh, to your some new positions. I'm super excited to be working, uh, alongside of everybody for more time to come. Thank you.
Nice, thank you. We have a closed session this evening?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation as permitted under section twenty-one-point-five-one-J and section twenty-one-point-five-one-C of the Code of Iowa. These are two separate items.
Second. We moved in seconded to adjourn the closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation as permitted under section twenty-one-point-five-one-J and section twenty-one-point-five-one-C of the Code of Iowa. Uh, may we have the council's, um, statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed sessions and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, sections twenty-one-point-five-one-J and twenty-one-point-five-one-C.
Okay, discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Meskman?
Yep.
Mayor Abalosely?
Yes.
Mr. or Ms. Menzer?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternhead?
Yes.
Thank you. We adjourned the closed session.